Need to order? Sandy, you want to do a roll call, please?
Councilperson Bruni.
Here.
Bruni.
Here.
Erin.
Yes.
Hansen.
Here.
McGinty.
Here.
Does anyone have any conflicts of interest on the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Onto item number three. Consent of Agenda A. Approval of Agenda B. Approval of the minutes of the October 14th, 2014 council meeting. C renewal license for Sack County Fair doing business as Sack County Fair Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales. And D receipts and dispersments. Any discussion on those?
I would move passage of consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay. Have a motion in a second.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brani?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion, Perry.
Okay, item four on the agenda. Citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. Anyone? Okay. Item number five, continuing business. A Sack City facade project.
The architect is planning to have a final design meeting set up within the next week. We have not heard word on the actual schedule for those yet, but they're planned to be put together in the next week. He has communicated that he still feels confident that he can be prepared to submit those to SHPO sometime between the first and the middle of December, and that we would still be on track to have a bidding process sometime in the month of January. And of course, bidding is all contingent upon everything else falling into line in that line, in that, in that scheme of things. If SHPO doesn't happen in that time, it's not submitted to SHPO in that time, of course, everything else gets pushed back as that doesn't happen.
And who's on top of them for that to stay? Do we have to keep on track with him or on top of him?
Actually, Brandy Ripley and I have pretty much been the main contacts with him. In fact, Brandy and I just talked today because I wanted to confirm she had not heard anything from him because I had not heard anything. We talked with him in person, of course, about a week ago. Since then, we have not heard any communication. But at the time, he said it may take him up to two weeks to be prepared. I believe what you'll find is tomorrow, we'll communicate with him and try to identify if he has any update for us.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on the facade? Okay, B, Blue Space?
In your packet is a copy of the preliminary positioning statements that were received by the little subcommittee that's kind of been dealing with this issue. They asked for some initial feedback from the community as far as what we thought of these. At the time, the committee, the subcommittee that's been reviewing this had been myself, Barb, and Brandy Ripley. We kind of bounced these off some other people, too, to kind of get their opinion on this. And what's interesting is, is I haven't talked to anyone yet that hasn't, hasn't suggested that the first one is actually the one that they seem to like the most. Of course, the spirit flows element of it always makes people chuckle a little bit. But, you know, in all honestly, these things tend to be just a pinch corny anyway, but you want it to resemble your community as much as possible. The feeling was, is the first one probably had the feeling. If anyone has any other opinions or comments that they would like to share with Blue Space, I'd be happy to take those back either today or sometime in the next week or two. I'd be happy to share those back as well. So, I just, for the most part, wanted to share these with the whole council so they were aware that we had received communication from Blue Space. And they want to start working towards building some of this information into the next phase.
Are we supposed to give them our choice, then?
Well, they wanted to know if, they wanted to know what the subcommittee thought, but the subcommittee felt like everyone else had had the best of communication in that. So, we gave them our preliminary thoughts, and what I'm asking you now is if you have any further thoughts, please share them with us so I can also communicate that with them.
How will this be used?
I believe this will be used for the basis of all of the logo and design work that's being prepared for the Phase Two analysis.
So, this will be like a tagline?
Not necessarily, but it will be the basis of all taglines or any slogans that would be developed or any, for that part, any archery tree work that would be done as part of it, too. The idea is, is that everything that you do in some way incorporates this thought in it. Not that it itself's going to be a motto or a tagline, but that everything you do will embody the statement. And that's kind of how they, for those of you who know me pretty well, you know I'm not the overly artsy person as it is, so, but that's kind of my take on how it's going to be incorporated, Bruce.
So, the, I mean, I guess, so the spirit flows, I mean, obviously, it seems like something, if you put an extra S in there, it seems like we could be talking about something that's a nice bar, but...
That could make Charlie very happy, too.
Spirits flow.
I think, Bruce, because of the involvement with the Chautauqua building, we should have some reference to our heritage and then go from there as far as the spirit of whatever that may be.
Yeah. I mean, that's, I guess, I was just...
There seemed to be some pretty negative impact towards the rooted, the use of the term root.
Why?
I didn't really dig in too deep when I'd present it to somebody, and they would always say, "Yeah, I don't really like the use of the word root." That was just feedback I got and the people I actually presented these to.
My gut instinct about the roots is kind of seen as, it feels like, feels like we are immovable rather than, I mean, I like, like the flows and the grow, I like something, I like the concepts that we are moving toward a new destination instead of where firmly, firmly standing like the oak tree saying, "All right, give it your best shot, and we're not going to go anyplace anyway."
Still, it's going to our heritage and the things we've got, our older buildings and what have in town is really, really neat, and that's something we should dwell on, I think.
But if you have any more comments you'd like to share, just please share them with me via email or come see me, and I'll be happy to pass them along to Blue Space as well.
Item six on the agenda, miscellaneous. We're going to scratch number A because Chloe's not going to be able to be here tonight. So, we'll pass on that for this time. B, a representative from planning and zoning to address the council, Curtis.
Hey, everybody. My name is Kurt Blake. I tend to speak quickly and quietly, so if I, you know, catch something, just ask. I'll try to be loud enough and slow enough. I'm here tonight representing the Planning and Zoning Commission, Sack City. We want to create a nuisance abatement revolving loan fund. If I, I'm just going to read from my notes here. At the last meeting, I think it was, Bruce proposed a creation of a law that would define when a property is uninhabitable. Is that accurate, Bruce?
Yes.
And this was presented as a tool for the Planning and Zoning Commission to use if we go to court on something. We also like to propose this revolving loan fund also as a tool. When we get in front of a judge, we'd be able to say, "We offered this, we have this thing that we offer to people to help them abate their nuisances." Because it would actually be useful if someone took us up on it. What we'd like to see you do is create this revolving loan fund to offer to people who have been given, who, who were taking action against, legal action against, for nuisance properties so that they can come, get a loan to help them fix it up rather than just continue to own a problem, property. The, let's see. For people that can't immediately afford to fix it up, it would allow them to stretch out payments back to the city and, and think of like about 5% interest in that neighborhood. Anyone who gets notice is eligible. We'd like to see an amount that can be borrowed capped at $5,000 with a toll of, and they can borrow no more than 67% of the total project to prove that they have skin in the game. People who are eligible must present, how it would work is people who are eligible must present the bills at the end of the project so that we can prove that they're not spending, they're not telling us it's 67%, but really, it's covering 100%. I think there's also, at the beginning, we would want to see the estimates, too.
What's your timeline expectation on how long an outstanding debt could exist, Curtis?
Oh, that's a, that's a good question. I would say, I would say it'd be a six-month to 18-month. I mean, it'd be sort of up to you guys to figure out what you want, how fast you want it paid back.
Who would you assume would be the ones reviewing the applications?
Oh, the city. Oh, oh, let me, let me amend that. We would review the applications at the Planning and Zoning and then recommend them to the council as eligible. And actually, that's my, that's my question point. Do you guys have anything, do you guys need clarification of anything I've said so far?
I did have one more question.
Go ahead.
And that is, you used the term abatement. Can you give me an idea, are there limits to the types of abatement that you have in mind that they would be able to use this for? Because, I mean, you could have anything from demolition of a building or a shed or something like that down to, you know, I would assume it'd have to be a planning and zoning related abatement.
Have to be planning and zoning.
So, might be a broken, I mean, in that case, you might even be talking about a broken window situation since that would violate probably the maintenance code, so...
Well, I would, I would say that there would be, we didn't discuss this specifically at the commission, but I would, I would think that if they wanted to pay interest on a broken window and we were ticketing them for it and it would help them get it fixed faster, that it wouldn't be off the table.
The only question I can come up with, Curtis, is what happens if they don't pay it back and the city's stuck, right? That's my only concern. I thought about this after the meeting the other night, we talked about it.
Well, it'd be like, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we have to go after them for it, or?
Yes.
Generically, yes, we would have to go after them for it.
Now, if they defaulted, do they have to default the whole loan or just the percentage that they obtain? What's your opinion on that?
Well...
No, default only.
Well, if you look at, and of course, just for your purpose, records, I was asked to hand, to hand you out a copy of what Lakeview has...
I've got that.
Done. You'll see that under defaults, it doesn't really specify real clear, but it does say, it can be certified, it could be done as far as special assessments against property tax, liens against property tax.
Oh, I, okay.
But...
It also has a provision for small claims in there also.
Correct. And of course, I would assume we would want to go after any court costs associated with that as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm sorry, I just didn't understand the question. It would be, it would be a combination of however, however, whatever means you would use to go after someone, before they mount.
Now, my question, would it just be the portion that they would be responsible for along with what we gave them or total, or just what the city gave them for the money to, you know, correct the problem?
Just what the city gave them.
Yeah, be like the $3,000 out of the...
Yeah.
Okay.
Another question I would have is, you talked about a mega maximum limit of 5,000. What about a minimum level? I would assume you wouldn't want to be writing loans for $40.
Well, that's a good point. That goes back to the broken window question. I never really, I, I haven't, I haven't considered or, and we haven't spoken about a minimum.
Sure. Okay.
And the match, would, could they do any kind of match, let's say, if they were doing the repairs themselves?
I would say no. We'd really want to see, we'd want to see half, skin in the game, real money. The 67%, the, what am I trying to say, the 33% would have to be their money. Just to show commitment, you know, because, I mean, there's not really going to be a credit check or, or anything that goes on for the money that we're going to give them, so...
Now, now, one question, I don't think, when you and I talked about it, I even brought up, Curtis, and it's something I thought about since, is I know on the side of previous revolving loans where we've done more economic development related, usually the resolve, revolving loans are a loan of last resort when an individual is incapable of obtaining a loan from a bank, for instance. Do you see any type of need-based element to the application process here?
No, I, I don't. I would make it first come, first served if it were me. With preference given to people who have not gotten one prior.
Adam, what's been the history on paybacks on a revolving loan?
Actually, we haven't, other than Kids World, there's not one been one that has been active since I've been here. Sandy might know, have a better picture of how effective have we been?
We had two defaults out of 10.
Not bad.
So, you talked...
They're usually pretty, those were all business.
We have never done a payment one.
I understand, it's a business.
But those were, my question would be, 5,000 would be the, the max on one, how much is being proposed to be in the total?
Your total pool of money, are you looking at?
Well, that would be a, that would be a negotiation. It would obviously require some sort of trust and agency that would be funded by, from somewhere who don't know where yet, probably the general fund. And, you know, I would think on a trial run perhaps for the first, for the first five years, maybe just $10,000. And I should probably mention at this point, too, that I would also propose that the, that it all be sunset, that it all sunsets the year after the big election each time.
Define big election?
There's, there's always an election where there are three council people and a mayor elected. I would say that this, that the TNA and the, and the fund itself, and the program itself would sunset the year after and have to be renewed via resolution.
So, it would coincide with the midterm elections?
Sure. So that, so that any council at that point, if it changes the majority, can...
No, it would be, it would be going after the elections that could be like 15, 19, 23, 27, 31.
Yep.
So, then every four years, starting in 16, although I'd like to see 16 skipped and have the first sunset be on 19, so that I can have some time to get his feet underneath it. That way, that 10,000 isn't just sitting there never to be reclaimed again, come back in the general fund at that point if it, if no one was using it.
If my understanding is correct, you can set up a revolving loan without actually using a TNA account?
I don't know the technicalities about it.
Yes, you can.
That might be more advantageous for the city, so it wouldn't absolutely tie that money up if it weren't being used.
Well, and obviously, that's a discussion to have between the P and Z and the, and the Budget Committee. As that, as that comes up here next month.
And you and I have talked about that, so, I'm sorry.
It'd really be kind of at your discretion.
You mentioned 5%. The model you gave us was mentioning half a percent.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I? Yeah. I, I meant to say half percent.
Okay.
Okay, 0.5%.
Steve?
Steve Gary here. Question I have for, since I served on P and Z for a number of years also, do we feel that this is a way that we can get rid of some of the problems we have? It seems like we've done so many things in the past that we're, I'm going to say we're about at the place where it's time to start taking down structures. If we have 43 homes here in Sack City or 43 buildings in town that have no utilities that are in ISO or that have been up on tax sales and all this other, is the revolving loan fund worthwhile? Isn't it time to drop the hammer and show something? You know, we keep giving and giving and giving and giving, and I don't know if the magistrates have changed in the last three years. The magistrates wouldn't do anything in the past. Now it's time, I think, you know, we, we start the bulldozer.
Man?
Go ahead.
This is part of that process of dealing with the magistrates. The more that we can show them that we are working with them to get the nuisances abated, the more likely they are to side with us when it comes to trial or when it comes to a proceeding.
I understand that, Curtis, but we went through so many proceedings that, you know, it started out 30, 60, 90, pretty soon it was a year later, and, and here we go. This time period just keeps escalating to, when's it going to happen?
Well, there's been, there's been a change in how we do things since you were on the Planning and Zoning Board. We had a presentation at a League of City Cities meeting from, name, Dave Genick? Is that, was that his name?
Early.
Early.
Yeah.
Who basically outlined how they get things done. We are following that model now, and along with following that model, we're trying to create these tools to help us, to help strengthen our case when it comes to proceedings.
You know, we're talking houses, Curtis, have had, had broken windows in them for 10 years.
I understand. Have you directed Stacy yet to go after the properties of...
I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Stacy.
Okay. I directed Stacy to start legal proceedings against a couple of properties at the last meeting. And using this model that Dave Genick has laid out, we're hoping to have success with them. We're doing a test on, I don't know, whatever property Stacy thinks is best to get her feet underneath of us right now. And having this in place won't hurt, and it might help. It's certainly more than what Early has in place right now, and they're successful.
I guess my thing is, is being a taxpayer here in this community, we need to start seeing some policies happening.
Well, that's why part of my proposal also is that it sunsets, it comes back so that the money isn't just gone if it's, if it's not used, or if it, or if it turns out it's a tool that is not used.
How soon do you think you'll be able to talk to Stacy, Adam, to get the ball rolling?
The two times he came in in the last couple of days, I was in two different meetings and didn't get a chance to talk to him. I'll see if he's on tonight, and if he's not, I'll, if he is, I'll run by and, is he on tonight?
Tomorrow night.
Okay. So, if I don't get a hold of him this evening, I'll talk to him tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on planning and zoning, Curtis? Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I just, I would really like to, if you guys have any more questions, I'd really like to talk about it tonight. It'd be nice, it'd be nice as we go into this first proceeding with Stacy that we have, that we have this tool in place. Or at least that it's agreed upon that it's going to, that we're going to look at it and try to figure out if it can work so that we, so that during the, during the process, Stacy can make them aware that it's coming. Because the budget, the budget's going to be, the budget meetings are going to be done after the time period that the first notice is going to be coming to court. No, I'm not saying that right. Court takes a while to work through. The budget process is going to be done, and this thing is either going to be in place or you guys are going to reject it by the time the first one comes to, to court.
So, do we have any discussion amongst council members on this? Whether you think it's a good idea, don't think it's a good idea? Do we need to, I mean, is there anything we can vote on tonight, Adam, or if somebody would be...
Well, the, the first action that would be necessary in doing this would be to pass something similar to what they did in the form of a resolution. So, we would need to draft up a resolution, but it sounds like to me, there are still some elements that need to be negotiated as far as what the minimum, you know, there was a discussion on minimum, there's a discussion on a couple of other elements. You know, if the council wanted to direct me to meet with P and Z and try to work out those differences, or if they wanted to, I mean, there's several different ways that that negotiation could take part, but, you know, whatever they want to do from that perspective, there's still some elements that need to be hammered out, it sounds like, before we're ready to proceed with a resolution.
Well, as long as we're seeing here on the record, do you guys have anything you want me to take back to the, to the Planning and Zoning? I've got, propose a minimum amount. Anything else?
And then...
How long to return the money? Or how long to pay back?
It might actually be, I might actually have it in the draft of the rules. Is it 18 months or six months?
If you're talking $5,000 at six months, that's $833 a month.
So, that's probably not six months.
Oh, yeah, it says no longer than six months from date of loan agreement.
Yeah, right now, it's a six months.
And I guess, I guess my, my one concern about that, I mean, yes, I know we want the revolving loan to revolve, but if they can't afford $5,000 in repair, I'm questioning if they can, if it's realistic to expect them to afford $833, well, with a half percent interest, $840, whatever, a month to repay it.
That's a good point.
I mean, I, I mean, I hate to become loan sharks where we're setting people up to fail. I mean, it's, I mean, because if they can't, if, if it's, if they can't go to a bank and get a $5,000 loan which will repay over a longer period of time, the probability of them really paying back a $5,000 loan in six months, I would say, would be, you know, so 18, if you go 18 months, then you're looking at 200...
And that would be more realistic.
Would be more, would be more realistic.
The, it sounded like to me there were two main elements that need to probably be discussed at more length. One is, is what abatements would qualify, and the other one is a minimum cap. Those sounded like those were probably the two main elements that probably needed to be hashed out to a great degree. Other than anything that you guys might come up with as far as whether you like the match amount, whether you like the timeline amount, whether you like the sunset provision ideology, whether you like, I mean, any of those that you have issues with, we, of course, would potentially need to discuss more as well, but...
I would personally favor a non-TNA revolving loan fund. Something that was, I mean, you can do a revolving loan fund that wouldn't necessarily be tied into a TNA account, so I mean, if we needed a little more flexibility with capital, if it weren't used, not that we would rob from it, but I think it would make the city look better, I think, on, on paper.
Well, and of course, I would agree. If there's some way to not have money tied up, that'd be great.
And...
It's a little off topic. Can you explain to me how you don't have money, how you don't fund?
Our current revolving loan funds are not in a TNA, are they?
No. No, I, I think what's, what he's getting at, and it's probably based on conversations we've had, and we had these same conversations, is, is I think the initial discussion was that if the money wasn't used, let's say you put 5,000 in this year, and the money wasn't, say, 4,000 of it wasn't used, that you'd get 5,000 next year plus the 4,000 that wasn't used this year, so now you have $9,000 sitting in it. That is the way a TNA account works, not really a revolving loan account. And so, that would be the difference is, is that typically what we do in the revolving loan is that you take Kids World, for instance. The money was borrowed out, and that every year, we collect the money from Kids World. Well, at the end of the year, we don't leave the money in the revolving loan that we collect from Kids World, it's transferred back to the original fund source, which at the time was the gas department. So, that money goes back to the gas department every year. It isn't left in the account. So, that is the way the revolving loans are set up. I think what was the initial discussion was, is the potential of that money lingering back and being available for reuse.
That's accurate. That was the initial discussion.
Yeah, and, and I think that's probably the basis of Bruce's comments is, because, you know, you and I had this conversation, I'm not a big fan of ear, of money that's earmarked and, and tied up. I like the fluidity of, of cash flow. And, and that would be tying up money that hasn't been used in multiple years, and I'm, I've never been, that's a policy matter, it's something I've never been particularly crazy about, but it's of course an option.
Review would be how this would function. It would be, the commission would make a recommendation to you to exercise the revolving loan fund on a property, and then you guys would decide whether or not you're going to?
That's the...
And it would just come out of the general fund?
Well, would, well, that might be a question we ask the auditor first.
It would come out of whatever the auditor says.
Do they want us to transfer it to the revolving loan fund and then pay it out of the revolving loan fund, and then therefore pay it back into the revolving loan fund when it comes in? I would guess that's probably, you can't remember, we haven't done one of these in some time, but I would, I would perceive that's the way it would work. So, in essence, let's say we give out $1,000 and they have 12 months to pay it back. Well, then, when the, all the, whatever is in at the end of that year would then be Well, then when the, all the, whatever is in at the end of that year would then be transferred back into the general fund at the end of that year, is how that would work.
I don't know if I would have a hard time selling that back to the commission.
Okay.
I mean, anything to, anything to get the job done, I think would do the trick, although it'd be nice to secretly build up a hundred thousand dollars.
A war chest.
Curtis, did you check with Hurley? Did they use the money that they'd been collecting as a revolving fund or was it a fund that was set aside for that?
That's a good point. I've got the notes on it, but I didn't check with them. And I'm sorry that came up with that.
No, no problem. I'm gonna see her in a few minutes anyway, I got a meeting. Curious. Because a revolving loan in the past, because I used to be on that one, we have, I think we had five, like six of us, only one councilman, the mayor, we had a banker, real estate, can't remember who it all was, but we'd come back with a recommendation of what we thought this was gonna fly or not and, but there was never an amount that was set aside for that, it was just each one was handed by itself.
That was more for businesses than personal?
Yes, it was all business.
And you might notice in the way the Lakeview one set up is they kind of have it intermixed.
Do you have the Lakeview one in front of you or the one that I modified?
They have the Lakeview mod, well, it's a Lakeview one with markups on it.
Yeah, there would be no, there would be no economic development, commercial aspect to what we're proposing at all. This would be purely for residential.
If my memory serves, Planning and Zoning has fifteen thousand dollars in this year's budget.
It is currently located under public administration, yes.
I mean, that, if you take, from current personal experience, that might take down two houses.
We decided maybe two or three, it depends on the size of the house or the structure.
The one I just got a bid on was seven thousand. I mean, you know, again, it depends on the size of the house.
It does.
We're kinda hoping to get that all spent before July.
Right, right. But as I recall from Planning and Zoning a year ago, there was an unspent five thousand from...
Previous year.
From, from a previous year. I would certainly support taking, you know, that, that five thousand from, the unspent five thousand from the previous fiscal year as a big, to put into a revolving loan fund if we could agree on the repayment time, the minimums, you know, that kind of thing. I would certainly support that happening quite expeditiously. I mean, I think, I think that money we would have available to use and it's, it's not a huge amount, but would allow you to come up with...
It's starting...
It would, it would, it would be there, it would be a, okay, we could do one five thousand dollar loan or we could do five one thousand dollar loans or whatever you determine. And that might be do something that we could do to help what you're looking for to try and alleviate that. And I know that we're looking at some definitions of, you know, what uninhabitable houses are. Adam and I have talked several times about that, we have to come up for sure what, what the county has, we haven't been able to figure out until what the county has at this point or unless you've got that.
Yeah, I, they're, they called me back, let me know they were looking into it. The first step in that entire process, the abandonment process, requires that the county actually have an ordinance into place, so we've communicated with the county and asked them to verify they have the ordinance in place.
So, so before I can bring, to act on anything, we have to figure out whether the county has it or whether we have to encourage the county to do something. But I mean, if we could kind of do the retroactive five thousand as a beginning of a revolving loan fund if we were able to agree to like a minimum amount, I don't think we want to mess with...
A broken window.
Any, I mean, I would say anything under five hundred dollars or something, that would be, is my gut instinct. And a reasonable repayment time and maybe, if you do a thousand dollar loan, six months is okay. If you do five thousand, I'm not sure six months is, is really realistic if people need it.
Well, it's my understanding you guys can, can't do a vote on this since we're meeting about it. The questions that are on the table right now, if you were to make a motion for, and vote on something for me to take back to them as a counter offer to what we're, to what we propose, that would be great.
Well, okay. Can we, I would personally like to see a resolution actually written out before we vote on it. I mean, I mean, I mean...
Can we direct you to please meet with Planning and Zoning Adam so we can come up with something?
Yes.
I would make a motion that you meet with Planning and Zoning as soon as possible to get this resolution set forth and then can we put it back on the agenda for...
Yeah.
First meeting in November?
Sure.
And then hopefully the resolution will be done and we can...
We're not gonna meet before the first meeting in November unless we have a special meeting to meet with Adam.
You're right.
In November. I just say in November.
Okay, so then we'll put it back on the agenda for November.
That way if they do end up having a special meeting, they can do it, if not, we can do it.
November twenty-five. Again, next time you guys meet after ours.
Ouch.
Am I saying that right?
Okay. Okay. I have a first and a second.
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson? McGinty? Branny?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Well, thanks for, thanks for considering this guy. Thanks for all of your work. Happy to meet with Adam.
Thank you. Okay, C, six C, consideration of approving Sack City Title VI program?
Short and skinny of this. The feds have started doing some gas audits of municipal gas entities and they've been critical of cities for not having a, a recognized Title VI acknowledgement, which is a form of discrimination, identifying that we are not violating Title VI. And so there's a couple of other implementation elements that I have to put into place. For instance, making sure that moving forward, our contracts include a provision for not discriminating under the terms of Title VI. When we go to, we have a posting we need to set, we need to have out in our, a display case that says we, we don't, we are a Title VI compliant company and, and that when we do reviews and other type of activities, we need to also incorporate understanding just like we do with Title IX or any other entity, that we took Title VI into consideration to make sure none of our employees are discriminating on the basis of Title VI.
Okay. Anybody have any further discussion on that?
And this is a model with some minor modifications and I found a couple of grammatical errors since this has been presented to you. Bruce and I went over some of the grammatical errors.
I just thought it was nice to get rid of the city of generic.
And, and so...
There was a pen in my hand, what can I say?
Is it red?
So, so, so...
It's white.
So, so this would, this would of course, this is a complacency issue. This is a complacency issue.
Okay, so...
I would move adoption of the Title VI plan with the, with the grammatical corrections.
Okay. We have a first and a second, we need to call.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Perry? Motion carried.
Okay, six D, review and update of gas operating and maintenance plan.
Um, I received a requested update to our gas O&amp;M plan. It is one page and it is basically the change of an idea, actually, it is the change of an individual working for Iowa Utility Board, but it is found spelled out on page thirty-one of our plan, so therefore to update our plan with this name, we have to update the entire plan.
We need to have a vote on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll...
I'll make the motion to adopt the new change in the list that is up for the gas operating plan.
I'll second it.
Brokaw, councilperson Branny?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Motion carried.
E, six E, discussion on League of Cities Conference?
If no one else wants to speak tonight, I'll speak about one particular event I went to just very briefly. I went to one on cybersecurity and quite literally walking out of there, if there's anything I realized is that none of us are protected. The only true way to be protected is to have a system that has no external link within your network. Of course, that isn't a viable option in any business setting to have that type of setup. They made some recommendations as far as passwords and how you do password protection, which I'll be doing a little bit of training with our employees that have computer access to make sure that they are aware of those type of security elements. So that primarily what came out of it is you, the, there's no one or no system that's going to protect you completely, but there was a couple of elements, the biggest of course, was not having easy passwords that could be easily identified, because there are programs out there that can break your password just like that. So I'll, I'll be doing some training with the employees on that.
Also changing like every sixty days.
Correct, yeah.
And, and I, I attended a number of workshops as well and I'd like to just review a few of those and I'm not gonna go through a outline of everything that they covered, just a few of the highlights. Gerald Clausen, who's the city manager in Carroll, gave a presentation on lowering the stress in the work environment. And one of the key things he said is you'll, you'll end up having to do things that will get you unelected. In other words, do things that are in the best interest of the city, but not necessarily things that are gonna make you popular, so do things that will get you unelected was his statement. And he said it's important to celebrate your successes, even the small ones, and I think that's something that we have to really do, you know, anytime that, you know, if we take it for granted, our successes, we really need to, you know, advertise it and sell it and, and celebrate it. And he'd mentioned that their city planning, they do their plan on an annual basis and like we've done, we've brought in an outside facilitator to review our plan. We've done it every several years, I think. They said that they do it on an annual basis, bring in an outside facilitator and he said it's really important to keep your plan in front of you and review it frequently. Next one was Dustin Miller, who's with the Iowa League of Cities. His program was essentially leave no one, no, no stone unturned and it had a number of sites and processes to develop grants and one thing that, there were a number of plans or grants available through the USDA Rural Development and that was one thing that I thought, and after reviewing his notes on the website, there are some things that we could perhaps pursue through the USDA Rural Development. And I have the details on that, perhaps Adam and I could sit down and go over that. And then I did attend the one on derelict buildings, which Curtis, and we've just been discussing right now, and they had actually two sessions on that, a beginners and a, a more advanced. And he said your main goal is you want to maintain property values in your community and if you don't keep after it, it's just gonna gradually go down. He said adopt a procedure, which it sounds like the P&amp;Z is doing that, adopt a procedure and follow it. And another thing was active code enforcement and we perhaps should review our codes to see if they're consistent with, what was it, six fifty-seven? Or there's, there's a section in the Iowa code that, that addresses...
Six fifty-seven, I think.
That addresses, you know, derelict buildings and, you know, so perhaps we should review our, our codes and make, make sure that they're consistent with the state and make, in order to proceed to court, so you want to make sure that your codes are really consistent and in line, and in line with state law. And Perry is a city that has done a lot of sustainable or green energies, they, they utilized solar powered units, LED lights and, as well as two wind turbines and they, through different grants and, and private investments and tax credits, they've actually had been able to cash flow that and their savings were like two, two point six million up to this point. So the city of Perry, and they did that in conjunction with Mank, the engineering firm. So that, Perry would be a good resource, you know, for getting grants and doing renewable energy sources and for savings in, in energy and it was really quite a significant amount. Now, that pretty much concluded what I was gonna contribute today.
The thing I was gonna just make a comment about, sorry, Chris.
No.
Maybe I've been going too long to these meetings, I already don't know, but it's getting harder and harder to find some of these meetings that actually, that actually help us at the level of, well, we need help. You know, so many of these meetings are designed for fresh, new people, because if you sit there at these meetings and talk to the guy next to you on both sides, these guys, first year and second year in, so they're, they're really new and they're looking at the lower level. We've kind of moved on and it's kind of difficult to, I guess, the people that I was, the thing I was noticing the most was that, you know, each community has their own way of doing things, you know, we can, we can rely on asking what they've done, what they've done, what they've done, but we still gotta pull together on one thing for ourselves. No one thing is gonna help us on any given try. I don't know, if that makes sense? It does to me.
Okay, six F, consideration of postponing November eleventh, two thousand fourteen council meeting to Wednesday, November twelfth, two thousand and fourteen due to Veterans Day. I can tell you right now, I won't be there on November twelfth. If you do move it, my mother's retirement party is that day from six to seven thirty that night, so...
Could we do something that morning?
I could be there in the morning.
Would you like, I, I don't believe those words are coming out of my mouth, could we do a seven AM council meeting?
Write that down. Bruce proposes.
I mean, because I couldn't be there that night either.
They recommend that it be no less, or no more than twenty-four hours after the regularly scheduled and so we, I could be technically be any time after, any time between five and five is what they typically recommend.
Well, I mean, sooner than seven, I can tell you that right now.
Well, my point being is, is that seven would be fine.
You can do it the reverse way you do it, Monday too.
Yeah, you could do that as well. Well, I think the code doesn't really...
Allow you to do it earlier?
Doesn't allow you to do it earlier.
Either morning meeting or noon meeting, if that...
I would prefer morning.
I would prefer morning too, that way you...
I'm here either way, so it saves me an evening.
I would move that we move the November eleventh council meeting to seven AM on November twelfth.
I would second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Vote is Gary Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Branny?
Vesant Honeyday.
Tom Tootie.
Vesant Honeyday.
Tom Tootie. Go afterwards.
Okay, six G, discussion on sanitary sewer department status.
Oh, included, it was late into your packet, some of you probably had it in your mailbox instead of your packet. What you'll have here is, just to kind of give you a short synopsis of what you see in these two pages, is you'll see that the changes we made back in March or April, we've been following the projections on where the revenues have been as a result of that. We've not really seen the change in revenue we expected to see due to adjustments in people's usage. One of the things I think we need to do to really sit down and seriously look at this issue and probably put a more all encompassing approach to it, is call the committee to come together with, which is Tom and Teresa, sit down with Dwayne, look at what kind of expenses opportunities are there that we haven't already identified, maybe somebody a little less, looking at it on a day-to-day basis like Dwayne and I are, and maybe let you guys take a little bit more of an outsider's approach to it. Give us some of your opinions on some expenses you think we need to be adjusting and maybe reevaluate what we did from a, from a, a rate change. And you know, one thing we talked quite a bit about the last time around was how much of it to put into rates, how much of it to put into bases, and it's probably a good time for us to sit down and talk squarely about... time for us to sit down and talk squarely about whether or not we want to, whether or not we want to change that, what we can do from an internal standpoint, from an expenses standpoint, and come up with a full-fledged plan on how we can do that, and present it, come to a consensus on what could be presented to the council. Sooner rather than later would be my recommendation.
So what are you thinking?
Um, Dwayne said not Friday, but if we wanted to do it anytime later this week or sometime next week?
I'd prefer next week.
Okay. If, then I'll try to schedule something with the four of us for next week, so we can sit down with Dwayne and, and review this issue in more deep detail. What you'll see presented to you in this information, you'll see our rough revenue numbers through the first quarter of this fiscal year, and you will see, and of course, you'll see the miscellaneous income is not a guaranteed income. That's only when the county drops Lichate, you get paid for that. That basically happens in most cases once a year, so you're not going to see additional income usually associated with that line item. The utility bills, of course, is, is the monthly bill system there. That fluctuates because it's based upon gallons of water usage, and of course, more people use water in the summer and the spring and then the fall than they do in the winter time. So you, that is not a pure month-to-month balanced approach either. The sales tax is simply a percentage of the overall sales. It's actually part of the utility bills. It's just a percentage cut off and sent straight to our friends at the, our friends at the state. The, and so you'll see that there's what we've got through the first quarter, what our projections for the year are. Then you'll go into the expense ones. This is not every line item, the expense line item on the expense budget, but all I did is I identified the ones that currently had an actual cost through the first quarter, and then I gave you projections for those that are expected, that are very different than what you're seeing through the first quarter. A great example of that is if you look at, for instance, electrical and natural gas, you'll see that those, natural gas, of course, most of you would realize, the bulk of that is going to be used between the months of November and March at the facility. So the $2, the $211 spent so far is a drop in the bucket to what they'll actually spend this fiscal year in that department. Of course, the area we've talked about quite a bit up to this point, and I had a discussion with Dwayne about it earlier this week, is that the, the most ripe opportunity for some potential type of savings on the expense side would be driven by the utility side of things. As you can see, that makes up 85 percent, 85, I'm sorry, $85,000 to $90,000 of their overall, their overall projected budget. And then you'll see that through the first quarter, they've spent about $53,000, but they're projected to spend about $280,000. Then, of course, you also have the debt payment requirement, which is for the improvements at the plant, which is the $282,000. That's how we come up with those two numbers. You'll see under there, I, I discussed there, we did have, we had been having a discussion previously about the ideas of refinancing our debt through the Iowa Finance Authority. You might remember that the loans we took for the project were through IFA. I, we did receive a setback about two and a half weeks ago. Tracy Sebold notified me that after reevaluating our agreements with them and looking the issue over, that we would not qualify for refinancing of our loans because the loans were locked in for the first eight years of, that way the creditors are guaranteed a certain, you might remember the air, the hospital had a similar situation with their debt. The first couple of years are locked in so that there is some kind of recovery of financial opportunity. And then, so, so you will see that I addressed that as being something that was something we were counting on as being a part of our overall package plan to deal with the issue, and we figured that was going to save us in the tune of about $55,000 a year. So that is something that, that's now off the table. So, but we'll talk about that in our subcommittee meeting to quite a detail. We'll sit down, look at line item by line item on the expenses side, and see if we can find an opportu, our opportunities there, and then we'll also look from a revenue side if we need to do something different. It doesn't necessarily mean all in all, you're talking about, about increases in your, in your rates, as it may be adjustments in how we go about collecting those rates. You might remember, as I said before, there was quite a bit of discussion about how much we collect in the base and how much we collect in the actual rate of usage. So that might be something we want to reevaluate, too. But this is all for us to discuss and hopefully come to some kind of consensus and present to the council as a whole.
I see in today's Fordocks Messenger, they're looking at a $15 a month rate hike in sewer over the next two years.
Well, there's, a lot of communities can expect that this is going to be a growing issue for them. Many of the communities in the state of Iowa are supported through lagoon systems, and it's well-known throughout the industry that lagoons are coming to an end sometime in the near future. And when the lagoon systems go away, a lot of these communities are going to be forced to put in systems similar to ours. They're going to be starting from scratch, which means they're going to spend lots of money putting systems into place. And so one element of utility bills that I think you can expect to see a future, a future no matter where you live, a future that's going to be somewhat questionable is going to be sanitary sewer, because there's more and more demands from the EPA and the type of testing and prevention of what you're putting back into the system, but at the same time, they're taking away some of these methods that are currently being used to clean up wastewater.
Okay, 6H. Committee and department reports. Need a discussion there?
Looking at the amount of, this is, I was looking at the amount of sewage that's treated versus the amount of water that actually is pumped. I see again, we're about, about 210% of sewage treatment, and we have water pumps. Is this all infiltration?
Well, you know, you and I talked about that some. I went back and looked at what the, what the, I'm sorry, the rainfall was during that time period, and it is not consistent with the amount of usage that are showing in these numbers. So I did ask Jim if he could take a look. I, I'm, I'm more curious at, looking at both departments. I have not talked about Dwayne, to Dwayne about this issue yet, but I asked Jim about it. What I'd probably do, Bruce, is I'll pull Jim and Dwayne together and probably see if we can come up to explain the situation. It, it's usually typical that the, that the sewer side is usually a little bit higher in rain, in heavy rain months. Do, I mean, let's be all honest, our system is 90 years old in a lot of cases. When you have heavy rain, our treatment out of the sewer plant is going to be significantly larger than what we're, what we're treating at the water plant. But in the cases where you don't have significant rainfall months, it's more questionable about why you have such disparity between the two numbers. And I'm just asking them, they're our experts on this area, and I'm asking, I'm asking them to kind of give me an opinion on the matter.
I mean, it's been, it's been nearly doubled in the last five or six months.
Yeah.
And not necessarily, it can't make the sewer cost any less to treat a lot more money than it's going to pay.
Sure. You'd be dealing in that case with more electricity and more chemicals.
This North Fifth Street Bridge thing on you with maintenance. What's up with the North Fifth Street Bridge?
We had, we, well, we didn't. DOT had someone do an evaluation of the bridge recently. They came back feeling that the bridge was in significance, it was in decent state. However, just in our own observations of the bridge, we feel that something we need to start planning in our CIP plan in the next fiscal budget is about how we're going to address a long-term challenge to deal with replacing that bridge, or at least doing a significant improvement to that bridge. Actually, Danny could probably speak to that, and I know he's not really probably prepared to speak about that, but, you know, he's seen it.
At the top of it, starting to get like potholes in it. We've patched them several times.
Yeah.
Eventually it's going to have to have a new deck or something put on it, or replaced completely, or whatever.
Yeah, we, one of the...
Just wondering if they're going with it now, or...
Well, it, it will be something, I have numbers. I've been provided some numbers I'd rather not scare you with right now.
Yeah, don't.
But I have been given some preliminary estimates on what we would need to prepare for in our CIP plan to be able to, to deal with that issue. And of course, there would be some, there'd be multiple financial resources within the city that could share some of the costs associated with that project, because it does touch both the general funds, you could make arguments, it also touches the storms that were found. I mean, there's a couple of funds that could be potentially impacted by that project.
Is that a firm in the under room?
Yes, it is.
Is the structure of that bridge in good shape? Is it just the upper deck that's the problem?
In the assessment, two different structural engineers have reviewed it in the last two years. There's nothing of significant concern, of significant concern. You know, you, you always hear the stories that as a whole, en masse, our bridges in the state of Iowa are in relatively poor shape. We are not in a position yet, based on their assessments, because what happens first when they start getting really worried about the structure of your bridge, is they start recommending that you regulate weight and speed on the, on the bridges. And as of right now, neither structural engineer who reviewed the bridge are making recommendations of that nature.
Supposed to speed up so you can go faster over so it doesn't collapse while you're on it?
Sounds good.
Or slow down, which one is it?
That sounds good.
So when I'm going 45 in that zone, don't stop, okay?
If you're a firm to market boards, have we thought any more about trying to do something about South Fifth Street?
Actually, one of the things I was going to discuss in the council forum is, is that we kind of got derailed a little bit in our meetings. Probably time for us to get together and have another Thursday meeting where we can discuss infrastructure, and of course, the main issue in this infrastructure discussion is the financial, how we want to go about discussing the financial elements of those of those infrastructure projects. We had a brief discussion about it a couple of months ago. We really never kind of went anywhere with that discussion. It probably would prompt us to have another Thursday meeting where we discuss this issue a little further, because of course, there's a lot of different priorities asking for the same pool of money, and we need to decide.
You've spoken with the county, though, on that, correct?
Yes. And the county has indicated to us that they are interested and willing to work with us, but of course, we've got to answer our own question.
Right.
Yeah.
Danny, since you're here, I was going to ask Adam this, but since you're here, what time do you start street cleaning the streets when you street clean?
Teresa, actually, we addressed this this week.
You did discuss it already.
And we have decided that we are going to be operating at 6:00 AM. We're going to start operations at 6:00 AM, and...
Where, residential or like Main Street streets, or...
Residential. I start at 7:00, just like any other day.
Yeah. So the...
It's just Friday morning when I try to do downtown is when I start early.
Yeah. So the idea here is if we're going to see what kind of problems it presents, but our plan is, as of right now, is just to not proceed with any street sweeping prior to 6:00 AM.
Did you receive any phone calls?
Yes, I did.
Okay, good. I was hoping they would call, because I don't want people just calling me and not calling down here, so.
Sure.
And then, did you guys, did Tom get a phone call on Saturday? I think it was about North, South 12th Street? 11th Street, the one in front of the high, the middle school. Mary Jacobson's front yard. Conda Slagel called me wanting Tom's phone number, whoever the head of maintenance was. There's a cave in there, I guess. Has Tom addressed that with you or anything?
Well, first I'm hearing about it.
Okay, you might want to check into that with Tom. I don't, maybe he took care of it. She said she literally, they were mowing Mary's yard, right next to Bruce Peterson's there, and she literally fell in up to her thigh. Yeah.
In her yard?
In the yard they were mowing, it's not Conda's yard, but, and she, I gave her Tom's cell phone number, said to call Tom.
Well, it's Tom.
Didn't know.
And maybe the reason he didn't address it with me is maybe he went ahead and took care of it.
That's what I'm wondering, so I just wanted to make sure, because she said it was pretty good size. She went and got flags to put in it and...
I'll talk to him.
Anything else in council forum?
Did we set a date for a morning finding session?
Uh, do you guys want to try the 6? Is there a reason we couldn't do it November 6?
Probably, because I can't think of it.
That is Thursday, isn't it? Yeah.
Just remember you have your sewer meetings sometime that week, too, though. If that matters.
Yeah.
Teresa's on it. To do two.
The 6 is fine.
Yeah, because that's going to have to be in the morning, because I probably can't.
Unless, um...
Or someday after work.
Unless Kyle tells us that that's a conflict for them, or we could have it in another location. There's no guarantee we have to have it up there, but I'll contact Kyle, assuming that location is available. I'll, if not, I'll set it to another location, but we'll, we'll be, we'll move forward with the idea we're going to do it November 6 from 7 to 8.
I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
All right.
Second.
Counselperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.